We Generation and Policy Committee, I'm councillor Mazurikbal. I'll be chairing today's meeting. Just for information, the meeting is open to the public and is being webcast. We've received four petitions and 13 questions from members of the public. Usually if you, I don't know if members of the public have had sight of the agenda, we do have copies over there. We usually, each committee has an allocated slot of 30 minutes for public questions and petitions. And as you can, as I've just read out, I've got four petitions and 13 questions. And some of the questions that I've received from members of the public have got some subset questions as well. Hence why, thank Amanda for sending out an email yesterday, just to remind people that it's important that we also get through the business of the committees. So I'm prepared to be flexible to allow people to get their point of view across in the petitions and the questions. But if you can stick to petitioners, if they can stick to the three-minute allocated slot, and if questioners could stick to the two minutes. What we've also said is, yes, as a number of you be asking one question, I'll be able to respond, but where we've got a subset of 13 questions, I'm just not going to be able to go into the level of detail that's required. So as part of this process, we also provide a written response, or I'll provide an oral response, but we also follow that up with a written response. And you don't have to wait for the meeting of this committee. You can email and contact myself, and we have a number of, we have a Liberal Democrat spokesperson, which is councillor Andrew Sangar, and my co-chair is Julie Growcock, and the vice-chair is Christine Gilligan-Cubo. So our details are on the website, so as I said, you don't have to wait for this meeting. You can contact us any time. So as I said, the agenda, there's a copy if people want a copy of the hard copy. It is also online for people to download. Can I also request that mobile phones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so it doesn't disturb the conduct of this meeting, please? And I understand there is no fire test planned for today, so if there is an emergency, please follow the instructions from our town hall staff, and the assembly point is at the back at Tudor Square. So I'll ask members to introduce themselves, and then when a report, sorry, start again. Members will introduce themselves, and each time when a report is brought forward, I'll ask the officer to also introduce themselves. So if I start with my co-chair, councillor Julie Growcock.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm councillor Julie Growcock, member for Stockbridge and upper Don Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm Christine Gilligan-Cubo, and I'm ward member for Hillsborough, and I'm deputy chair of this committee.
Good afternoon, I'm Ruth Mercer, I'm ward member for City Ward.
Hello, my name is Diane Hurst, I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Hi, my name's Craig Gamble-Pew, I'm councillor for East Acre Street Ward.
Hello, I'm councillor Richard Shaw, I'm councillor for Beechfield and Greenhill Ward.
Hello, I'm Andrew Sangar, I'm councillor for Forward Ward, and I'm the group spokesperson on this committee.
And I'm councillor Ian Auckland, and I'm councillor for Graves Park Ward.
Thank you. Have we had any apologies for absence? No, thank you. And I understand on item three, there's no items where we are going to exclude members of the public or the press. Any members wishing to declare an interest on any of the items? No, thank you. Item five, minutes of the previous meeting, can these be approved as a correct record? Agreed, thank you. Now we'll move over to item six, which is public questions and petitions. So the first one I have is Deborah, who's the lead petitioner regarding Topley, Deli and Cafe. If you would like to come to the mic, please. Isn't that one?
Just at the back here. Good afternoon councillors, my name is Deborah Leonard, and I also have with me Sherry Hazelhurst. Thank you for hearing our petition. So I'm a concerned member of the public who witnessed an occasion in December where a fully out-of-control vehicle ploughed into Miss Hazelhurst's shop premises at Topley Deli on Baslow Road, and I actually witnessed the devastation and the destruction. And it's the second time, the second occasion, within four years, where the shop frontage has been totally demolished. The petition is to ask yourselves to consider safety preventative measures, possibly in the form of substantial bollards that will prevent further damage, destruction. And in addition to that, if I can say, the area in question is heavily frequented by members of the community, so this just isn't about preventing further damage, it's actually about saving lives and livelihoods. Because my belief is, fortunately, the shop in question was closed, it was the week between Christmas and New Year. Normally, there would be passersby in abundance, and it's a very narrow pavement. The pavement and the street is actually on an incline, quite a steep gradient. So what we're asking for is some substantial sensible safety measures. What we don't want to do is prevent vehicles from parking there and shopping there, because it is, we are wanting to protect our local businesses as well. Sherry, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Just to say that four years ago, when it happened the first time, we did ask for some protection, and I was told that funding wasn't available, and it was very unlikely that it would happen again. But it has happened again, and I am absolutely convinced that if the shop had been open, either a member of my staff or a customer would have been killed, because it was completely destroyed. And that's all I can say really, what price you would put on a life.
Please. You can sit there.
Can I just say councillor Ickbell, that my understanding is that there has been a sum of money, I don't know whether this is correct, £10,000 allocated for measures to be looked at and considered?
Right. Firstly, as I said, thank you for coming in, and it's good to see you as well. I'm really sorry, Sherry, that this has happened twice, and I met with officers yesterday to understand the issue. I wasn't aware, I wasn't informed regarding the first incident, I was told about the incident that had just taken place on the day you've just mentioned. From the briefing that I had with the officers, I've also been informed, I've also been speaking to your local councillors, and I'll allow councillor Sangar to come in after I've spoken. So from what I understand, it was driver error that caused the accident, not any of the engineering works or the footpath or anything else. It was driver error. And this is a technical response, because it's, you know, our officers have gone out, and they are in continuous dialogue with your councillors as well, that's the most important thing, so we're not ignoring it. So the response is, it's not possible for us to install a bollard or a pedestrian railing, both must be installed in a certain distance from the curb edge, and there is not enough pavement width to allow the installation of these structures while maintaining the pavement width to ensure that all users, so that's mobility scooters, prams, post chairs, as an example, can still access the area. But we are still investigating, sorry, we have investigated raising the curb edge, but the survey concluded that if we did raise the curb, this would alter the water runoff, and there would be potential that the water then would enter the shops as the pavement dips at that particular point. And as I've said a number of times, we are in discussions with your local councillors, and I think Andrew wants to, councillor Sangar wants to come in.
Thank you Chair, and thank you for the petition and question. I mean, I was part of the visit with Chief Executive Kate Josephs and your local Dornet Topley councillors, so, you know, I saw it for myself, and I made sure the chief executive understood the problems. From a South West lack perspective, this clearly came to our last public meeting in January, and we, you know, we said at the time, because we had unallocated funds at the time, that could we allocate up to £10,000 for a solution? And that's what we did then. Highways officers, as councillor Ickbell has just been said about, have made a number of visits and are looking at options. What we're doing, I'm looking at Robert Parkin, so I get my words right here, what we're doing, we're meeting again in public next Thursday. The report we've got from the Community Fund does not, has not allocated that money, so we're carrying it forward. Because what I felt as Chair of the Lack is that I didn't want to rush to a conclusion that highways officers were not happy with, and that we're working with highways officers and lack officers. So effectively, we're carrying the money over to next year, we've agreed that, we're going to have to agree that formally next week, but that's the position. So we've allocated the other money, the other, so we've got £100,000, we allocated £90,000, and then that £10,000 we're going to have to re-pass over to find a solution for Topley Rise, for the debt, for that curb. As you've just heard from councillor Ickbell's answer, it's not easy, and we're going to have to work with you, and we're going to have to come back to you and find the right solution, because clearly, we don't want a situation where cars end up in the front of shops. I mean, it's terrible, and it's happened twice. So I don't know what the solution is, but there is a sum of money that we're passing over for next year. We're not going to rush it, we're going to work with council officers so we get the right solution. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor Sangar. Hopefully that gives you a sense of security that something is happening, so, because I wasn't aware of the first accident, I think for all those members, it's important that we also understand what went wrong, but it's good to see that the local councillors have put, and that is a substantial amount of money aside, to try and find a solution. So can I thank you both for coming in, and Deborah, thanks to your dad as well for coming in.
Thank you Chair. Can I just respond very, very quickly in response to something that you said in response to, there are-
If you'd be very quick.
I will be quick.
Please.
There's a litter bin, a substantial litter bin on the same stretch of pavement, so I don't accept that bollards, which are a lot less voluminous than a huge litter bin, which is on the same stretch of pavement. I just wanted that on record. Maybe that.
Yeah, thank you for that, Deborah. We'll put it on record, and I'm more than happy to also come out with your local councillors to have a look, so the offer is there as well. But once again, thank you ever so much Chair for coming in.
We'd love to take you up on your offer Chair, thank you.
Definitely, I love going out, I've been out around the city a number of times.
Thank you councillors.
The next petitioner is Diane Wood. Diane, would you like to press the button so then everybody, yeah, brilliant, thank you.
Thank you for listening to my petition. This isn't against the clean air per se, we all want and deserve clean air. This is the way the council have gone about including the Ring Road in the clean air zone. So in, I think it was 2018, according to Sheffield City Council's website, when you wrote back to the government, you said that there were going to be certain roads included, which was a Rundle Gate, Sheev Street, A57 Parkway. At no time did you mention the Ring Road. Now, as far as a lot of people are concerned, a lot of angry people are concerned, is that Sheffield City Council, for some strange reason, have included the Ring Road, which was built to take traffic away from the city centre. So why are you now charging people to actually use the Ring Road? I don't, nobody understands why that's been brought in. And as I say, that wasn't in your original plan when you sent your response back to the government. And people are absolutely up in arms about this. We've started a group, and already within two weeks, we've got nearly 7,000 people that are against this scheme, and lots more. The petition has only got 400 people, but that's because of the way your website is set up. People don't want to go on there and give you all their information. So you're actually stopping people signing petitions that people actually feel quite passionate about. So it's the Ring Road that is causing most of the people most of the trouble, and I just don't understand why it's been brought in. A Freedom of Information Act request from yourselves that I received, said that there was only two areas that were above the legal level, the legal NO2 levels, and that was a Rundle Gate where you've, for some strange reason, diverted all the buses onto, so it's going to be high. And Sheev Street, which is where all the big diesel engines are running off the trains. So it seems a little bit strange to the rest of the general public why the Ring Road's been included. Thank you.
Diane, thank you ever so much for coming along. I'm sorry to hear that members of the public have found it difficult to get on to our petition, if you set up a petition to put the details on. Happy to look into that. On the clean air zone, as, and I've repeatedly said this, like many other local authorities, if you went to Bradford Hall, Birmingham, Bristol, we've all been instructed by government to do this piece of work. Now, the government itself, Clean Air, which is an international lobby group, holding all of us to account on the climate emergency, which I completely agree with. This government was taken to the highest court of the land three times to put something in place. They didn't, and then were instructed, and then we were instructed, to put something in place very quickly. And, sorry, I've got it-
Reading Thursday.
So in July, the 1st of July, and the 26th of August, we did carry out, sorry, let me start again. I'm going to go through some dates, Diane, which demonstrates, and all this information is on our website, when the consultation started. So the first time we did some consultation was between the period of 1st of July and the 26th of August 2019, and we received 12,000 responses. Another stakeholder engagement event, and this time with businesses and other impacted groups was undertaken during 2020, and this went into early 2021. And then there was a further consultation to inform the public about the final proposals, which was taken between the period of 22nd of November to the 17th of December 2021. And as I said, it's important, we all clean up the air, because it's not just the nitrogen dioxide that comes out of vehicles, but it's also particle matters and other dust that comes out from industry. But the government mandated us to do it in the city centre, and therefore, like other cities, we don't have an outer or an inner Ring Road, hence why we have the inner Ring Road. And it was important, as I said, we were instructed by government, because there are dangerous levels of pollution out there, so to do nothing was not an option. So for me, it was important that we took on board what government had instructed us to do, and the scheme has gone live. We are providing financial support to heavy goods vehicles, light goods vehicles, private hire, hackney cabs, and so forth. All this information is on our website. And I've got nothing more to add really to that, and I'm sorry, I'm going to let you come in for a second, because I did allow somebody else to come in, so.
According to Deffra, Leeds had 20 zones where it was high, we only have two in Sheffield. Leeds have managed to get their scheme scrapped, because they've done a lot more creative work than Sheffield City Council have done. So they've managed to have their schemes scrapped, because they were fearful of any legal claims coming against them. So I think probably you need to look inwardly to see why Leeds have got 20 areas and they've managed to get the scheme scrapped, and we've got two, and we've had to bring in this. And as I say, it was, yeah, the Ring Road wasn't included in your scheme to the government.
The government were very clear that you have to reduce, because we are exceeding the legal limit. So the air we are breathing out there, all of us, young and old, is at an illegal limit. And you're right, the approach by government, I don't agree with, because the area I represent, which is Donal Ward, if you speak to my residents in Tinsley, I think I've got a questionnaire from Burn Grieve, so as a council, and this is a cross-party approach, we are investigating, looking at having a clean air plan for the city, but not based on the stick approach from government. But one of the criteria from government was that it was important to reduce nitrogen dioxide levels to a safe level the quickest way possible, and the only way we could do that is with the scheme that we've now introduced. But I'm happy for you to drop me an email, I'm happy to answer any other further points, but as I said, I've got a large number of people. Cheers. Next petition is from Richard Brogdon. Richard, have a promising name, right there, surname, Brogdon, apologies there, it's probably because you're a Leicester fan. Only kidding, welcome, good to see you again.
Good afternoon to you all. I come to you today to present a petition against plans to introduce red routes along Exol Road. Last month, I wrote a letter to the committee as principal dentist of LWC Dental Care, expressing deep concerns regarding this initiative, specifically on how the changes will affect our patients' access to our services. To date, I firmly believe that these concerns have not been taken with the seriousness that they deserve, and an adequate response has not been forthcoming. The purpose of this petition was to gauge opinion amongst the business community across the entire road that is affected by the infrastructure changes. All's consultation documentation from Connecting Sheffield and Sheffield City Council regarding this initiative suggests that there is limited business opposition to the introduction of red routes along both Exol and Abidale Road. This petition goes as a separate exercise to the online petition run by change.org, where opposition to the scheme currently stands at over 13,500 signatories. Across Exol Road, I identified 299 businesses across five clearly demarcated areas, Lower Exol Road, Upper Exol Road, Hunter's Bar and Lower Banacross, Upper Banacross, and Silver Hill and Parkhead. We also amassed a further 71 businesses along Junction Road, Hickmop Road and Sharivell Road. The petition took place between the 22nd of February 2023 and the 14th of March 2023. Our petition statement was clear, we, the undersigned, vehemently oppose plans put forward by Sheffield City Council and Connecting Sheffield relating to the introduction of red routes along Exol Road and Abidale Road. These objections include the extension of bus lane operational hours, and the prevention of waiting, loading and parking outside of businesses up and down both roads. We as a community support the diverse and vibrant community of retailers and services that line both roads, and understand that restrictions such as those that are proposed will only damage growth as a result of consumer convenience reduction. Our results are conclusive and demonstrate that there is in fact limited support for the proposals of red route introduction, limitation and reduction of parking, and extension of bus lane operational hours along Exol Road. Put quantitatively, 78.3% of businesses that we approached oppose the plans that are still being considered, therefore fully supporting our petition. The figure rises to over 82% when considering the other areas that are considered. Furthermore, upon submission of the report that we present today, we have since had notification that indeed the one business that represented a negative petition response is actually opposed to the introduction of the red route scheme and misunderstood the petitioner when discussing in her establishment. We therefore, in reality, receive no firm opposition to our petition statement. In light of the damning report recently published by Sir Mark Lowcock, could I please implore the committee and the council to take seriously the concerns of businesses and residents along Exol Road? If democracy is to prevail, the concerns of traders, healthcare providers and residents needs to be heard and taken seriously, and these plans need to be scrapped immediately to avoid any further unnecessary stress and anxiety. We as a collective are fully aware of the need to tackle the environmental issues that we face as a society, including traffic reduction and improvements along this route. However, any changes must not be to the detriment of the unique business microclimate that currently exists. And thank you very much for your time.
Once again, Richard, it's good to see you. Can I also thank you and the other businesses that invited me and my colleagues up on that Monday night, and then we came up with the offices on Tuesday. As I understand, the consultation started around, I think it was autumn/winter of 2021, and concluded in 2022. I wasn't the lead person at that time. And it has rumbled on for almost two years now. In the workload, and this isn't me making any excuses on behalf of my colleagues, but the workload this year has been very heavy as we've transitioned into these, the new working arrangement. So apologies also because of 13 years of austerity, of cuts to our budget, has meant that we have a lot less people results, so officers, we have a lot less officers than we used to. We used to have a community engagement team, as I remember many, many years ago. Our officers have put a tremendous amount of work into this, and the only thing I can do is apologize it's taken so long for us to get here. Last year, the leader and the deputy leader, councillor Terry Fox, on the behest of this committee, asked for a pause because we were picking up, because there's so many schemes happening across the city, it was becoming very, very challenging. I've found it very challenging this year. When I heard from those businesses that Monday evening, I went back, as I promised, and spoke to my colleagues. Now, no decision has been made, so when we have provided a response, and I've done the response, and I know my colleague councillor Growcock has written to you yourselves as well as businesses, that's a generic response, and the reason for that is, is because we haven't concluded the scheme, a report hasn't been finalized for that to come here. So I know that one or two businesses said, you know, you keep coming back with the same. Now, for me, one of the asks that night was, can we bring forward the report, unfortunately, because so much information has to be collated, but also there are elements of that screen which you clearly recognize, such as junction improvements and so forth, twinkling with the traffic license and everything else. So it's not just about the red lines, and I hear where you're coming from. Because we haven't arrived at a decision, we couldn't have brought a report back. So for me, it's important, as I said on that night, and I also said to businesses that it's important that you speak to the other political parties, as I mentioned on the night, it's important for you to also invite councillor Sangar as the spokesperson for the Liberal Democrats, and also provided councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubo's details as a member of the Green Party to also, for you to communicate. Now, we as a Labour group have expressed a view- to communicate. Now, we as a Labour group have expressed a view, print the, the report because it's not in, in front of us. But as a, as a Labour group, we've come out with a, a statement. That statement is out there in the public. And yesterday, was it yesterday before, we met with the bus operators. They raised concerns regarding the delays that it's causing to them. I also put, put across the points that a number of you raised. So for example, I remember going on a walk just before the meeting with Andy Rice, who's up there, he said, and he said, Maz, if you take it back a half an hour or an hour, businesses will have to, to close and so forth. And, and I appreciate the anger, the anxiety and the frustration and the commitment we'd like to give you is we are going to work with you before a report comes here. And it was good to see that you've set up a small working group as well to, to work with us. And as I said, you know, happy to go parade by parade to ensure, because this is the key bit, as you've said, Richard, we need to, 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 to be listening. And unfortunately, this isn't the, the fault of the, the process. But as Andy pointed out to me when I was there, we don't carry out an economic impact assessment. And the mayor's just gone, he thought he was here to ask questions. But myself duly met with him on Monday morning. It was just something we'd had in the diary and he had an opportunity to bring this up. And he said, Maz, happy to, to work with the council, the businesses, if we need to do an economic impact assessment to understand what is the impact on, on businesses. So the assurance I can give you, because this is unfortunately the, the last meeting of this committee, we're going to elections. I, I don't know who will be sat here next year, but as I said a, a number of times, we've given out a, a commitment to you as businesses that we will listen. For me, it's also important that we take on board what the residents say, and hopefully we can arrive at a position that works for us all. But yeah, Richard, do you want to come back?
One thing that yourself has made your position clear. We've had dealings with Barbara Masters and Andrew Sangar from the Liberal Democrats. I've sent emails to all three Green councillors and conveniently the Green councillors are the same in my personal residential address as well as the business address. I've, I've had no reply from my Green councillors and Douglas Johnson as well, as was in my practice when I wasn't available. And I've messaged him and tried to engage with my own councillors regarding this. So it'd be good to have an open discussion and, and to make them councillors fully aware as to the issues that people are coming to my practice and, and talking to me personally. There are plenty of other businesses that are represented here where their implications are different to mine. But for my, my practices, accessibility and, and issues surrounding discrimination for, for my patient base. So it'd be good to have a discussion with the Green councillors and, and to have engagements on that. And at the end of the day, that's what we all want, I think. We all want engagement. We want dialogue. We want to be able to formulate a solution for this problem. There's clearly a problem. I don't think it'll go away with the plans that are in the current format.
I mean, I, councillor Douglas Johnson isn't here and it'd be unfair for, for me to, to, to make a comment on his behalf. But you have written to, to him. So hopefully we have got Christine, councillor Christine Gilligan Kubo, who's the vice chair. Hopefully she'll feed that back. I don't know if you'd like to comment. You don't need to, but if you'd like to, you're more than welcome to.
Thank you. I thought I had replied to your email, actually. I'm just checking that because I'm pretty sure I did reply to your email. But I will pass on your message to Douglas.
It might be the junk, sorry.
Okay, yeah. I, I will talk to Douglas, but I'm pretty sure I have replied to your email.
Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you for, for you and your colleagues coming in. The next person I've got is Charlie, Mr Chester. Who's a brilliant pub. Is it, was it pub, Charlie, I came to this week?
Yeah, can I stand?
Yes, wherever you feel comfortable with.
Great, thank you. Great. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to thank the committee for allowing Abidale traders, Abidale Road traders association to be able to present the start of our petition. The petition is a mirror of what we've been doing on, they've been doing on Ecclesall Road. It's the same wording. And so far, so it's about what I will now call the three issues, which is the red lines, 12-hour buses, lanes and the reduced parking. So I don't want to repeat those three things all the time. We agree with the general scheme of things, but it's these three issues which are causing the amount of distress for businesses. So so far, we've got a petition which is from businesses, residents and customers. We're on about 430. We know that we will keep on with this petition because at the moment, the issue is still live. Okay. So we've got the petition. I'd also just like to introduce myself, if I can. I've been a member of the Sheffield Business Community for 40 years. I've run what's called a pop culture business called GBI down at Callum Island, which employed 120 people. I sold that two years ago. I was also co-founder of the Forum Cafe and Forum Shopping Centre in the early 90s. And that was also where Devonshire Quarter was. I know this sounds a bit weird, but I did actually name the Devonshire Quarter, which is a part of Sheffield now. And because of that, the reason for that is that hubs and independent businesses need identity for people to be able to say this is either our local area or they would go to those areas. So we developed that. I worked with Simon Ogden, who was head of planning at that time, and we helped develop that Devonshire, Devonshire Quarter area. And I also sat on Sheffield First Board with Bob Kirkslake and, you know, through that period for three years. Okay. The last two years, I then invested some money in a property on Abidale Road. A lot of money, time and expense has gone into that property. We're open. It's called Over the Yardarm. I run that with my son. However, I would have to say at the time, I did not know about the three issues. If I'd known about the three issues, I would not have been investing in that bill, in that area. In fact, I think I wouldn't invest in the city. This is so important, these issues. Also, because of that investment, that is now going on, and this is one of the biggest issues that we have. The uncertainty of these things is causing a loss of business confidence for the business, the existing businesses aren't investing in their properties. Some people are going out of business, but also the newer units or units which are now empty are not being filled because of the uncertainty. So we've had an email from Mark, what's his name? He works for Crossface, Mark Holmes, and he was saying he looks at all the tenants and pick the, people are coming to look at the units are asking, well, what about the red lines? What about the bus lanes? And he is not able at the moment to give any answers on that. So none of those units are getting filled. Okay. So what we've got scenario is, aside from the issue of we think they're completely unworkable, the fact it's taking so long, the uncertainty is leading to essentially a drip, drip, drip of this, you know, the streets falling into disrepair. Okay. Now, I know that there was a consultation two years ago, which is quoted. Now, that was fine. Now, we know now that there's been lots of arguments about that. A lot of people went involved in that consultation. It was due to the pandemic. However, in the end, 3,500 people did answer that consultation. That consultation was overwhelmingly negative against it. It was 48% were against that consultation. 13% were neutral and 39% were for it. Okay. It's overwhelmingly. If you actually spend the time to look through the comments on there, and I have done, I've gone through a thousand of them, the feeling of disbelief about what the proposals mean, and that's a polite word for what some people say, a lot of the neutral people also said that this was like not workable. So what we'd like to say is, within that consultation, which if we did one now, would be, I would say about 90% certain that everyone would be against it, we're getting what are standard letters from the councils. We've got councillors going on the radio saying, we have consulted. But what they're not saying is what the result of the consultation. So what, me and my little way of, I'm normally a trusting person, they're almost making out that the consultation has been done, which means you've listened. But the fact that they're not saying that the consultation was overwhelmingly negative should be stated all the time. So whenever that is, it's does my head in. So I don't want anyone saying that again. Okay. Now, as Richard said, in terms of the wider aspects of the scheme, we're all for that. Everyone wants to work together to have more, there's not longer to go. Yeah, there's, you know, everyone wants to work together. However, you know, the three scheme, the three points should be struck out of the scheme because the businesses are really, really struggling. I've got two examples, well, I could choose loads of different examples. But on Abidale Road, there's a green grocer called Sharbs. They've been there 100 years. Loads of specialist painters and decorators have been there since 1947. There are three generations of a family have run those businesses. Those businesses are worried sick. They would not be able to operate if those, these proposals came in. You have to try and imagine people getting loaded into the, the stock going in and then the customers going. No one is going to be able to carry home tins of paint, et cetera. And so, yeah, within it, the, the destruction to the business is really, really the most important thing, the uncertainty. So in conclusion, okay, I'd like to say, we as a business have been living and it is a threat of these three issues. We're worried sick. The units are going empty and no one is taking the new units once they know what the proposals are. The streets are slowly going to rack and ruin, you know, and so we want it copied. So this, this committee has the power, along with the leaders of the three political parties and the chief executive. I know you're not going to do it now, but you need to be listening to the businesses, the residents and the customers of all these people who put their heart and soul into their businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you ever so much. Rich history there, Charlie. And I remember on Monday and Tuesday, hearing from businesses that have been there for 30 and 40 years. It's a huge, it's a huge asset to the city because these are independent businesses. There's this false pretense that Sheffield has loads of big businesses. It's not. I think the figure is over 80% of our businesses are small businesses. And both Ecclesall Road, Abidale Road and London Road are very successful, thriving business centres, if that's the right word to use. And I was taken back by what I'd heard. And as you said, commercial landlords saying to, to me on that night that we are finding it difficult to let this space because people just won't sign up. And, and in a sense, again, for us, can't make a, a decision today, but my colleagues have heard what you've said. We've also been through the Brexit period. We've been through the pandemic together. And now unfortunately, together, we're going through the cost of living crisis. Hence why we as a political party came out very quickly to allay any fears. I mean, I can't comment on the report itself because it hasn't arrived here. And we will all be in a position to, to take a, a, a decision. But the, the offer, as I, as I said, when I visited that small group of you that are now a subgroup of the, the wider business community, I spoke to Will Stewart because that was one of the, the asks. William, he'll introduce himself. You, you said you'd like to meet with an officer as well on their own. So William, and I'll pass on his details because we only spoke this week. So while we're, from next week, we go into a, a period where councillors can no longer get involved in council business. So I am really, really sorry. We weren't able to bring a report today. But it does give us that period to, to, to come back, speak to you. As I said, the officers can listen to what's being said and, you know, what happens on the bottom of London Road and the top of Abidale Road is completely different. And that's how we need to take it chunk by chunk, what works for, for you as, as businesses. And that's the commitment. We're going to ensure that happens. I mean, on enforcement, as I said to the bus operators and others, we, we, we do enforcement at the moment. We have parking, civil enforcement officers. And I remember it was Richard who said, Mazza, you know, if somebody drops off a, an elderly patient, but the driver, him or her doesn't have a blue badge, you know, it is really difficult. So for, for me, it was, it's important, as you said, we need to listen. And we've got a period now before this report comes back to this committee in June or July for us to, to engage. And the officers will be involved. But as I said earlier to, to Richard, the, the mayor, Oliver Copard, has offered to work with us to, to do an economic assessment. Thanks very much for, for coming in today.
Thank you. Sorry, as we say, we all love independent businesses and like to talk about it. So please don't destroy them. Thank you.
On the same subject, I've got a, a number of questions, but because I've got them in front of me in the order, I'm going to go with the questions that I've got for, for, for the purpose of business. So I've got Dexter Johnson, who's here to, to ask a, a question. Sorry, I wasn't informed. That's somebody else who's coming in. But please, sorry, what was your name again?
Russell Cuts, C double T S.
Thanks for coming in.
The, the question that Dexter was going to ask, and, and it relates specifically to, to me, but it's got a wider reach. Basically, last year, I put a planning application in to install a secure cycle parking space in my front garden. This planning application was refused on the basis that the, the cycle storage facility, which was a steel shed, would be harmful to the character of the property itself and the street seemed detracting from the visual appearance of the street and would therefore be contrary to policies H14 and B E5 of the Sheffield Unitary Development Power Plan, policy CS74 and the core strategy. Now, the question, obviously, it, it's, this, this has meant that I no longer am able to store my bicycles securely at my home without taking them into the house. And this is a problem that not only I have problems with, but other people have problems with, particularly those living in terraced houses, particularly those living in multiple occupancy houses all across the city. And it's a problem that comes up all the time. So my question to, to this committee is, with the new local plan that's been written, which replaces these processes, would this application have been approved? Does the committee think that people should be allowed to install cycle stores at their houses, even if they're in the front garden? And is this something the council supports, given that keeping bikes in homes is problematic, especially for those in terraced houses and HMOs?
Thank you, Russell. And on behalf of Dexter asking the, the question, I can't really go into the details of each individual application or we'd be here for a very, very long time. But the assurance, I can, I mean, I'm going to go back and have a look at the application. I know that the Chair of Planning is just, one of the chairs, the planning has just raised a hand. But on, on the, the local plan itself, we have a cross-party working group which consists of myself, I chaired that. We have councillor Sangar and his colleague on there. So me and Julie, and then we have members of the Green Party represented on there, Christine and Paul Turpin, councillor Turpin turn up. So we are committed to providing sufficient and secure cycle parking for existing and future residents across the city. This is why the parking guidelines in the draft local plan set out minimum cycling, cycle parking standards. And the expectation is that for new residential development, cycle parking would be integrated into the development itself. However, However, the supporting text makes provision for considering alternatives where this isn't possible. This can include on-street parking, such as cycle hangars. And as I said, I can't really go into the details of that specific application, but it's a challenge. Uh, if you speak to my colleagues in Crooks, for example, or Walkley, where we've got active travel, uh, and Nether Edge, they've been asking us, uh, can we put in some, uh, cycles stories? So yes, as a city, we face a huge challenge. We're asking, uh, people to, to take a, a behaviour change, uh, either use public transport or, uh, use a bike or a scooter. And it's important that we provide some pace for you to, to store that. So it is something that we as a committee have been discussing and as just responded, it will be in the local plan. But if there's, uh, what we can do is for that interim period before the plan goes live, there might be something that we can do as a committee. Dan, do you want to come in just briefly?
I didn't want to comment on the individual case because as chair of, of, of planning, if any, um, case comes before me, I, I, I don't want to express an opinion that might be classed as, as prejudicial or not having an open mind. But it's just, thank you for coming, Mr. Cuts. It was really just to encourage you to, um, it's, uh, uh, as Mazza said, this is an important, it has an impact on how we move forward as a city, doesn't it? And just to encourage you to, um, enter into correspondence or, or make the head of planning aware. I know that we finished, um, the initial consultation on the, on the draft Sheffield plan, but officers are currently resolving any issues that come out of that. Uh, I think it's still worth your while putting this overall principle in that the, the, it, as you said, it's not just yourself that will have this difficulty, it's other people. And that needs to be represented in any future plan. So, um, I would be, you know, very, very happy, you know, um, for you to put that, um, your overall thoughts and comments in and have them included in the resolution as it's taking place before it gets to the Secretary of State.
Okay, thank you. And just to give you an assurance, uh, uh, Russell, Mr. Cuts. Sorry, if you just want to switch your mic off. Uh, just to give you an assurance, uh, I think councillor Growcott is, are you part of the Cycle Forum and Cycle Sheffield? I think Ruth is. So we have, yeah, Richard, we have regular dialogue with the stakeholders and both, uh, Richard, they lobby very hard as do all my colleagues. As I say, you know, it's a challenge for the city. Uh, as I said, we've got active travel happening in three of our wards. Uh, we proposed to do this in Gleedless as well. Uh, my patch where we have low car ownership, uh, there are a number of cyclists. So, you know, we need to find space. Unfortunately, the, the streets are so narrow, uh, if, if we could go back and plan the city again, we'd be in a different place. But the assurance I'd like to give you is that it will be in the local plan. And if there's anything we can do for the intermediate period, we will do. But I think you want to come back briefly.
Yeah, I think, I think my, my, my point with this is that, um, we have, I have a front garden and that is space to have this facility. Um, I also, um, uh, as a business owner, I have a cargo bike, which I would like to use, but I have nowhere secure at home to park it. It's a big thing. Um, but equally, the, the, the reason for this, this coming back was based on street scene and the, the bike, bike hangars are very similar to what I was proposing to put in my, uh, front garden. So would they be, um, affected by the planning? Also, the, the other situation is on the other side of my garden is a big white van that's parked there all the day because I cycle to work.
So a, as I say, I'm happy to, to look into your case, but can't comment on it at the moment, but the commitment as a committee and as a, as a council, uh, we are determined to ensure that, you know, you, you can have a bike and store it somewhere safely. So, uh, once again, thank you for coming in. I've got a number of questions where questioners won't be, uh, attending, so I'm not going to speak, uh, or provide a, a response. We will be providing a written response to those individuals. So I've got G Jones on a specific question on the clean air zone. Not here, good move on there. The next question I've got is from Jill. Hi, Jill.
Good afternoon, councillors. Um, my name is Jill Janotta and I've had a business on Ecclesall Road and other parts of the city for twenty six years. And I'm here to ask you, please, before you vote on the red lines proposal, please stop and think very carefully. You're an elected body, not a dictatorship. Your role is not just to advise and explain to the electorate, it is also to consult. And we as businesses, as I'm sure you've heard today, are telling you to scrap this project, the red lines I'm referring to. This is my question. Are you even sure that these proposals are the solution to the alleged congestion on Abidale and Ecclesall Road? Because you have to be very, very sure before taking such drastic action. And I'm not certain that you are sure. I can find no proper report, study, investigation in the public domain which supports the need for such extreme action. So in the absence of this evidence, I did a little investigation and observation myself. I live on Ecclesall Road South, just three hundred metres from the start of the bus lanes. I have a shop on Lower Banner Cross, which has a bus stop just outside. I also have relatives living on Lower Ecclesall Road, just below the Tesco precinct. Using those three points of reference over a sixth month period, noting traffic flow, I would challenge the assumption that there is conjunction, sorry, that there is congestion on the whole of Ecclesall Road during the whole of the day, making it necessary for us to have red lines from seven AM to seven PM. Of course, there's congestion in the morning and evening rush hour, but bus lanes are already in operation on those times. My observations suggest that at times outside those rush hours, traffic flows fairly smoothly. Now, I was very, very surprised or quite taken aback by a visit, um, from councillor Johnson to my shop, um, who postulated that in fact, the congestion build-up doesn't start at four o'clock, it starts at two o'clock. And I was quite taken aback by this. So I, I did for, for two, for the, this was two weeks ago. So I did my own observations and I noted them every single day at two o'clock. So I observed, everything I find is totally at variance with what he said to me was the state of play. I observed no early rush hour and the average number of people passing on a bus at two o'clock is ten. I also, not to leave no stone unturned, I went on the online Sheffield forum and looked and, and searched for conversations about congestion. And Ecclesall Road and Abidale Road hardly get a mention. The areas of most concern to most people are Park Square, Parkway, Mailin Bridge and Healy. I've reached the conclusion therefore, and this is a sad thing that I have to say, but I've reached the conclusion that in fact, you do not, as a complete council, believe wholeheartedly in the efficacy of this project. And that some of you are disingenuous in your promotion of the scheme as an improvement of traffic, as, as an improvement of traffic flow, which you are just using as a smokescreen. I would go further and suggest that this project is dogma-driven and promotes an ideology which trumps the needs of the community, which is, are very obvious, and most certainly sees businesses as mere collateral damage in pursuit of that certain agenda. I would welcome comments on my observations and a response to the question.
Thank you for your question, Jill. As I say, I can't really comment for councillor Douglas Johnson, he doesn't, he's not a member of this committee, he chairs the housing committee this year, so.
Can I just say that every time we've had a meeting, be it small or large, um, I have emailed councillor Johnson and invited him or any of his, um, uh, fellow councillors to attend the meeting. I emailed him after I did my short two weeks of survey, but he's not been to any meetings and he's never replied to anything.
Can I get NASA to ask, because I, there's only two you're asking questions, so then I can respond to you and NASA at the same time. Is that okay, Jill?
Yeah, yeah, fine, yeah.
NASA, do you want to come over and ask, because you've got the last one on Ecclesall. Stay there, Jill, if you like.
Good afternoon, councillors, good afternoon to officers as well of the council. Um, a year and a half ago, I had the pleasure of standing in front of you during COVID-19 pandemic, uh, in the midst of that and addressing you all, uh, and I spoke very passionately. Um, I was very upset and angry at the time, um, that I'd put all my life savings into buying a small post office, that was my dream, that was my vision, uh, working twenty-five, thirty years at it. And I managed to find, get a bit of joy inside that I bought a business, it's mine. I said, look, mum, dad, mum and dad, proud moment, family, brothers and sisters, very happy and very excited. Only for me to put all my child's money, my savings, everything that went into this business, and now I'm in the extreme debt. Um, I have a business that will probably, if you introduce this scheme, would not, no longer exist because of the very nature of a post office is to accept deliveries of parcels and everything. So far, what's been put on the table is that it had been an extreme threat. The thirteen thousand strong petition I came in to present to the council at the time, um, has been constantly, have been building up momentum still in the background as well as, as we speak. Um, and it was second of February twenty twenty-two when I came and I was given assurances by the then the person in charge, my question was directed to the Lord Mayor, it was given to councillor Douglas Johnson. After a, a heated exchange, councillor Douglas Johnson did not accept any of the, the points that we had, that I had raised. Um, and I was given assurances by the council that we would get a response and we would get some sort of meaningful conversation with us to see where we go with this. A year and a half later, no meaningful consultation with us. The consultation discussed in the executive summary is non-existent. Councillors, I ask why are we being held as businesses with such contempt, such disregard for the people of Sheffield, our vulnerable passengers? It's just basically a shoddy answer from the council that we're, we're not bothered. We, we want a steam, a steamroller ahead. And there's, in the, in a week where a tree-felling reporter said that the council is not listening and liaising with people, we, we ask, when are you going to start listening and liaising with us as businesses? Because we, there's no meaningful discussion until the co-chair and Andrew Sangar came across to, to, to our meetings over two days and give us the, some political assurance that they would stand. We have had no assurances whatsoever from the Green Party or any of the Green councillors or councillor Douglas Johnson. Councillor Douglas Johnson is too busy taking pictures this morning on Abidale Road about a car parked on a pavement, rather than coming here and answering and giving us some assurances and clarity. Businesses like mine will struggle to stay open. We've got a petition that's been going around for the last two, three months. Dr, 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 Dr Broden has been around and presented that question. We ask, why is there constantly lie after lie and why are we constantly not getting the right communication? It's about time we get some answers. We want some clarity today, uh, councillor Mazarick Bell. Um, we've had enough, we've got the clarity from your political party, we've got the clarity from the Liberal Democrats. Can we have some clarity from the Green Party? They need to stop this anti-business agenda and we would ask and request of the council committee today to please make a decision on this because it has to be done. The people of Sheffield, the businesses of Sheffield cannot suffer any longer, stop holding us with such contempt and disregard to not having meaningful conversations with us. So welcome the opportunity for, for, for answers to some of the questions. Thank you.
I mean, I can't, as I said, uh, a number of times, I can't respond for councillor Douglas Johnson. I mean, he's called, or was it one of his colleagues called me a liar as well? I mean, he was the cabinet member who's had responsibility over twenty-one, twenty-two of that period. Uh, as you said, you came and presented the petition, I've even read his pre-release. But, uh, uh, as you've recognised, we are in a listening mode, as you've recognised, both myself and councillor Sangar. So as, as political parties, we've been out and we will continue to come out and put my co-chair on, hat on, I made it very, very clear that it's important that you speak to everybody because this committee, I can only speak on behalf of this committee, we've always left the politics outside. It's been about putting the, the city first and I have really enjoyed working with my colleagues cross-party. And, uh, I was grateful to councillor Sangar when we asked, uh, for the pause. Uh, it was the, the issues that we picked up in, uh, Crooks, Walkley and Nether Edge, where residents were saying to us, to myself and councillor Growcott as the co-chair, uh, back in June when we came in, that you're not listening, hence why we went back out. Uh, we held a, a number of committee events in those wards and we need to go back. But the same principle applies here, as I've said, to both the petitioners and the questioners, that over this period where, uh, there's no committee, the officer and, uh, as I said, spoke to Kate Martin, who's the executive director, and William Stewart, who's going to come and speak to you as, as businesses. We want to make this work. I mean, on, on civil enforcement, we have people out there. So it's not like, you know, you, you know, it's the Wild West and, you know, everybody has a responsibility to, to park sensibly. The bus issue for me, if you go to other parts of this city, and I said this to the operators, you know, we want to find a, a solution for Abidale and Ecclesall. But if you speak to my councillor, uh, my co-chair, we've got issues in Stockbridge, you'll speak to councillor Craig Gamblepew, res, you know, our own staff up in Chapel Town are saying we can't get on a bus to get to, to work at the, the town hall. So, you know, the government, uh, didn't help us out either yesterday. They've only gave the bus companies money for an additional three months. So that long-term planning, we just can't plan as a city because we don't have the resources. The operators are saying we don't have, uh, the cash, we need government to put their hand in the pocket. So, you know, it's a very challenging, uh, situation for, for the city. And for me, we need to ensure that, because I'm a bus user, you know, I can get on a bus and get to where I want to. You as businesses, get the customers, the footfall and get your supplies because like, you know, you employ people, the supply chain also employs people. So as this, as I've said a, a number of times, I'm going to take up the mayor's offer to, to have a, an economic assessment. If we have to go shop by shop, that's a challenge and want to work with that small business group. As I said, I've only got a small group of officers and honestly, you know, I have to apologise to them as well because the workload that goes into putting something like this together is, is huge. But the commitment is there, as you've said, both political parties have come out and issued a, a statement. Bring in a second, uh, councillor Pugh. But, uh, I'll offer the opportunity, uh, as I have done to, to members to speak. So you, you don't have to, councillor Kubo, it's your prerogative. Uh, if you, if you want to comment, you are more than welcome to, to comment and then I'll go to Craig.
Thank you. Um, yeah, and thank you for your petitions. Um,
We will definitely communicate with you because I apologise if we haven't communicated with you. I think we haven't been aware of correspondence, personal correspondence. So we will definitely get something together and communicate with you on these issues.
Sorry, if you want to put your mic on, Jill.
Could I just say, I don't know how you can be unaware of the need for interchange and dialogue when, and I know, I suspect that many other people have done this, but after a visit of Douglas and councillor Johnson and three other members of the Green Party, including a prospective candidate for the forthcoming elections, when they left me cards and literature and we talked for a length of time, I made a pledge that I, every time there was a meeting, that I would inform the people concerned and invite them to that meeting. So I really find it extremely difficult to understand that you never had any correspondence or you never had any dialogue or potential chances to interact with us.
Okay, I will look into that. So I apologise for that if we haven't responded and I'll look into that.
I mean, a sincere apology there from councillor Kubo. But as the commitment as we've given, it's important we do that economic impact assessment. Because like I said, you know, it was Charlie mentioned the green grocers. I had businesses, the photographer and others, 30, 40 years. You know, that is a rich history and that's why the vibrancy is there. The assurance I want to give to you and to the businesses that are here that we are working, we will be working with you over this period when the report comes and you'll have sight of that. But I am really, really sorry that, you know, you've had to go through that period of, you know, frustration, anger. And I'm hoping we can bring a report, as I say, early summer to allay those anxieties. But hopefully, the two statements from the two political parties should have gone a long way to alleviate some of those concerns. The final point, I'm going to give to, final, a minute if you could take a minute, Craig.
In actual fact, Chair, I have a suggestion. It may require us to take a brief break in the meeting so that we can get clarification on legally how to proceed. It just strikes me, Chair, that we're hearing some really kind of important stories about the personal and business impact of the uncertainty. And I appreciate that the committee cannot make a decision until the reports have been produced so that we've got the full information. However, I know that in our political group, we've had a full discussion. And I would feel very confident about stating publicly in an indicative sense what our position is in relation to the three areas of the proposal, the red lines, the extension of the bus lane hours and the restrictions in parking that have been identified as being problematic. And I would like to see whether this committee, while we're all here, could move to something along the lines of an indicative vote, which would demonstrate to the public that where there is a consensus. So I would like to request, Chair, that we take a five-minute break so that we can work out a way forward.
I mean, I did, because when I went to the business meeting on that Monday night, I would have, I did say that I'd go back, seek legal advice if we could take a decision here. And if I allow, Robert, if you want to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Chair. So I'm Robert Parkin. I'm the assistant director for legal and governance and the advisor to today's committee. So whenever a local authority makes a decision, it needs to make it on full information. It needs to consider relevant considerations fully and set aside matters that are not relevant. One of the important things that local authorities need to do is carry out full consultation. Needs to take into account the products of that consultation diligently when it's making a decision. Separately, in relation to the outcome of a decision, so that's down the line. In this matter, we have a programmed report coming back to the committee that's just going to just do that. So it's going to, it's going out to carry out that consultation. It will contain the impact assessments that have been referred to and the professional officer advice so that the committee sitting on that item can consider it in full. There's a separate rule on something called predetermination. And what that does is it constrains by way of risk of legal challenge the possibility that a decision-maker carries out a lawful decision. And that is to pin itself to the outcome of a position prior to considering a report in full. So my advice, Chair, to yourself and the committee is that you're not in a position to make a lawful decision today that will, as it were, constrain the outcome of a report down the line. What members can do is demonstrate legitimate predisposition. So you can take a policy position and you can do so in a public sense around the outcome of a particular issue. As long as when it comes to making a decision itself, you bring an open mind to it on the day. So my advice is that you're not in a position to make the decision and take the vote in the way that's been described. But what you can do, and it's come out in some of the discussion and it may come out in different channels, is show that you have a legitimate predisposition around an issue subject to the engagement that's been, Chair, sorry, just to finish, subject to the report that's going to come. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that clarity and hence why I said this at the beginning, that the report isn't here, very difficult for us to take a decision. And it'd be unfair for me to put the council in a position where it could be challenged in court and the decision then is overturned. But as I've repeatedly said, our leader, councillor Terry Fox, we've had a discussion, as I said to you, we's Labour Group work as a collective. So it's not an individual chair's or co-chair's position. For years, this is, that's the way we've always worked. And I, and I said this when I met with businesses on Monday. I met with my Labour Group colleagues. We've taken a policy decision and that statement is out there. And allow councillor Sangar to come in. Craig, if you want to come back, I'll allow you. But if I let councillor Sangar come.
Thank you, Chair. I mean, can I just say that I've got considerable sympathy for the last two questioners and also for the earlier questioners in terms of, in terms of both Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road businesses? I mean, clearly, these are successful areas of Sheffield where we've had longstanding independent shops. And, you know, they've got lots of, you know, they're a great success story to Sheffield and we don't want to lose that. I have to say, myself and colleagues were very concerned back in October when the Labour-Green cooperative executive went for this policy. We were surprised. And my colleagues, councillor Barbara Masters, Shafak Mohammed and Roger Davidson, the Ecclesall Ward councillors, came to me as lack of chair and said, we are concerned, we get a lot of Ecclesall Road businesses coming to us, very, very concerned about 12-hour bus lanes, red lanes, reduction in parking spaces. Can you make sure that you know about it? And if you've got a walkabout with senior officers and senior members that they know about it. And I had the privilege of bringing councillor Terry Fox to see your good self, sir. And so we made sure that the businesses on Ecclesall Road got their view straight to councillor Terry Fox. We have continued our position that we are sceptical. As we've just heard, there's not a report in front of us. But we have always been sceptical about these proposals and sceptical that the business, the business community was taking, we need to take the business community with them, with us in any changes. And that was, that was why last year we were opposing them at the elections. And clearly, clearly, you know, we've all changed jobs since then. The council has moved to a committee system. The law, as Mr Parkin has said, we can only make a decision when we have all the facts and we have a full report. But our position has been very clear that we will work with the businesses. We want to see Abidale Road, London Road and Ecclesall Road businesses thrive. And therefore, any change to the transport system needs to bear the future success of businesses in mind. And that was our position in autumn 21. It was our position in the spring of 22. It's still our position in the spring of 23. We've carried on. Councillor Barbara Masters has done a very good job, I feel, in terms of working with the businesses in her ward. And as I say, I will continue to listen very hard to the residents of all the areas concerned and the businesses. I'll continue to try and find a way through this. Thanks, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Sorry, can I just bring in, shall I like? Yeah, yeah, I've got Ian as well.
Thanks for letting me in. Yeah.
Just want to make it clear. Robert's being very clear, we can't take a decision. I'm also conscious of time. And I can sense you want to find a solution like I do. If there was something on the table, councillor Pew, I would definitely be putting that forward. But if you want to make a quick comment or. Sorry, can you not, I'm not going to allow that, please. Regarding any political party, you're allowed to, I did give everybody an opportunity. So if you please don't heckle or make comments. You can direct anything at me. I'm more than happy to take any criticism, but not any of the others, please.
I feel as if the words have been taken out of my mouth, Chair.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Before, before we came into this meeting, I was minded. We've got an item on the agenda, because we go through paper like nobody's business, about the work programme. And one of the items on the agenda is for the work programme for a decision in the early summer, so June, is this item, connecting South Sheffield West Bus Corridor. And Chair, I was going to make a proposal, which I looked for a second and very happily vote for, to take the red line issue off of the agenda and the extended bus lanes off the work programme. But I've had a lot of correspondence from people and I've been at pains to say to people that we have to make a decision based on the report that's coming and that I have to maintain a sort of an open mind on what I think based on what comes back. And I thought it would be helpful to say that we've had an email, every member of the committee's had an email from the head of legal service saying, you can't make a decision today because that would be prejudicial, that you risk prejudging an issue and you risk a legal challenge. And we're all pretty clear now on what you think. Because we've, I would say, we've heard you many times. And that's the issue. It's plainly something we can't just take off the agenda today, just like that. And I still have to say, as far as I'm concerned, that I have to make a judgment when I see the report. And I'd ask you to bear in mind, listening to what everybody's said, that of course, there are people out there from that extended period of consultation who have commented favourably on it. And if we make what is confirmed an irrational decision, then we could find ourselves in legal trouble by whatever decision we make. I think that's true, isn't it? As legal advisers would tell us, that's one of the reasons why we're all saying, well, we have to wait for the report.
Thank you.
I hope that the supply, I've explained it well enough from my point of view. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Kubo.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say that we, as the Green Party, haven't made any public declarations about this because, one, it's part of a wider scheme that is funded by the South Yorkshire Mayor Authority to help us improve traffic and pedestrian access and cycling and all those things. So it's a part of a bigger scheme. We have some excellent and very experienced traffic officers working on this. They've been working on it for a long time and they are going to produce a comprehensive report that takes into account all the information. We will listen to all the stakeholders. We are not ignoring you. We haven't got all the information. There's a lot of economic and traffic data that is being collated. And now we're going to get a report from Oliver Copard about the economic impact. So when we have all this information, we can have an informed discussion at this committee. And I'm sure we can come to a decision that will be suitable and help everybody because nobody on this committee wants to put anybody at a disadvantage. We are trying to do the best for Sheffield.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to allow, Jill wanted to say something and Nasser. And then I'm going to, because I've got other people who've been kindly waiting to ask questions. So if either one of you want to.
Yeah, just very quickly, as we've heard now, it's all, we've got to wait for the consultation. We've got to look at this, we've got to look at that. And it just seems that, I know we've had Covid in the interim time, but when you said we've been looking at this from 2020, 2021, 2022, we're now in 2023. And I think we need some clarification on this as a matter of urgency. Because I think my colleague Charlie, earlier on, mentioned the fact that no one is investing in Abidale Road and Ecclesall Road while this is up in the air. And the point that I'd really like to make is it's been up in the air far too long and we need a conclusion.
Echo the words of the colleagues. And the reason why, councillor, I asked for the decision to be taken today or some sort of opinion to be given on the issue from the political parties present today was because there's an election around the corner. People don't want to be supporting a party or people that, especially that are vulnerable, disabled passengers that come in to my shops or for the union work that we do, the passengers that say, they don't want to be jumping into people or voting in May for political parties that are anti-business. So far, what we've seen in this is very clear. BBC Radio Sheffield, an interview was conducted where Douglas Johnson said he wasn't responsible for this, yet he was the one responding to me on the 3rd of February 2022. And he was the one leading this and he's the one signing this off. So there has to be the facts presented on the table. And we know from today's meeting, what we can take away as business is Labour's on the side of businesses, Lib Dems are on the side of businesses, but the Greens can't make their minds up because they're too busy wanting to put down red lines across our businesses and close our doors. And I'll tell you what, the people of public that are watching, please vote wisely at this next election. That's all I can say.
Once again, can I thank you all for coming? And we've all had an opportunity to comment. I wish a report was here so I could alleviate some of the fears. But the first order of business when we convene is going to be, hopefully, this report. The key bit for me is, please engage with our officers because we need to capture what's been said. You know, it was very powerful what I heard in that room. And that's been translated to the numbers on both petitions. So we hear you loud and clear and want those businesses, not just on Abidale, London Road or Ecclesall Road, but across the city to thrive. You employ people, the supply chain employs people, keeps money in the economy. And you're fantastic advocates for investment in this city. So I am really sorry we couldn't have brought a report here. But as I've said, the Labour Party here in Sheffield, via the leader and myself, have issued a political statement. We've heard from the political party. So I hope we can bring this to a conclusion. But regarding councillor Douglas Johnson, I've offered to go on air on a one-on-one, BBC Radio Sheffield, I'd book my meeting with any politician, anywhere, any place, any time. So thanks once again, but I will be coming up to speak to you as businesses again. Right, if I can move on. The next question I have is from Sam Waiting. Robert Rees. Robert, thank you ever so much for waiting very patiently.
No worries. My name's Rob. I volunteer with a number of charities, working with vulnerable people within the city. And the question is around the Clean Air Zone and the impact assessments made on charities. The Arch Project, the Essex Food Bank running out of Philadelphia Church, and the Beesman Sheffield, all are charities in Sheffield that require vans to conduct their vital work within this city. The Clean Air Zone will require these charities, and many like them across this city, to either spend ten pounds a day to conduct their work, or to spend their own money on new vehicles, because a grant doesn't go far enough. For clarity on this point, a Euro six van used is at the cheapest on AutoTrader at the moment, about thirteen thousand pounds, minus the three to four thousand pound grant. And that leaves a nine thousand pound value that the charities have to find. Now, the Essex Food Bank puts a number of ten pounds for a family of three for a food parcel for a week. It doesn't take much maths to work out that nine hundred families could be fed with the money that this van is, the money going on this van is being used for. Does this committee believe that this is a good use of public donations to these charities? And were these charities considered when this scheme was designed? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Firstly, can I thank the charity sector, the voluntary community faith sector across the city? It's been a very difficult period. I mean, they've risen up to the challenge over the pandemic period, and have risen again. I mean, it's non-stop. We've got, we had the pandemic for two years, the cost of living crisis, almost two years. So as a council and the city, we are grateful to the work that is being carried out by the charities and volunteers and so forth. I know a number of my colleagues, and Craig, and others have raised issues around how we support the voluntary community faith sector across this city. And regarding the Clean Air Zone itself, you're right, the resources that this council has received inadequate. We have to, in a sense, remove seventeen and a half thousand vehicles, but we've only been given cash for two and a half thousand vehicles. So that just demonstrates the challenge that we face. I did have a briefing with one of our officers, Tom Finnegan Smith. We as a collective, when I say as a collective, myself, Julie Growcott, councillor Christine Gilligan-Kubo, and councillor Sango, we meet now on a weekly basis to look at what issues are arising from the Clean Air Zone, what support can we provide, and so forth. And I do understand that we have a number of exemptions we can make to various vehicles. So, for example, low good vehicles, we're asking them to get in touch. It's very important that they get in touch, so we've got their details and we can work with them. And I understand a discussion will be taking place this week. This is on the agenda for the officers to look at. So I'm quite hopeful that we'll be able to support not just the Essex Food Bank, but the food banks across the city that do some tremendous amount of work, and the other support agencies like the C A B and others that have risen up to the challenge of supporting our communities. I mean, there was nothing in the budget yesterday to alleviate some of the issues that communities are facing. There was no money for buses either. So the challenge still remains. But rest assured, Mr Rees, that we are looking into this, and hopefully we'll find a solution that works. Thanks once again for coming in.
Thank you.
Next person I've got is Diane. And we have emailed you, Diane. We did email you with a response. And you're allowed to heckle me, but nobody else. So if you could keep it brief, please, I'd be very grateful. Thank you.
As part of the CAS, it keeps coming up about five hundred deaths in Sheffield City every year. I think Douglas Johnson said it was two hundred and fifty on one occasion, but anyway. And I just wanted to confirm whether or not that was from a report, from a House of Commons report by Dr Robert Vaughan from DEFRA in twenty thousand and ten. Can you please confirm whether or not that's accurate?
I'm just looking through the notes that have been given. Regarding the deaths, I can ask Tom if he can help out. But due to us exceeding legal limits, the air out there is killing people, the poisonous air does kill people. If Greg Feld was here, our director of health, he'd be probably in a better place than me to say that this is what's happening. And as I've said, I represent Darnall Wood, grew up there, I suffer from asthma. If you look at some of the work that's been done around the Fairness Commission almost a decade ago, inequality in this city, especially health inequality is divided. If you live on one part of the city, you live a lot longer. If you live on my part of the city, we're going to die fifteen, well, our quality of life reduces, and we die a lot sooner. But the air quality monitoring data says clearly that nitrogen dioxide kills. And if we speak to people with respiratory illnesses, because, just because we don't see it, it can be seasonal as well, the air pollution, it does definitely kill people. So I'm going to ask the officers at the back of it on if somebody wants to come in and just provide a factual response on the number of deaths. If you want to come forward, Tom, and press the buzzer and introduce us off. Cheers.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'm Tom Finnegan Smith. I'm the head of Strategic Transport, Sustainability and Infrastructure at the City Council. Just in terms of the specific question, my understanding is that the report references and where we are, where colleagues from public health are taking that information from. They've been advising us through the process around the Clean Air Zone in terms of some of the health impacts on people in the city. But our understanding is it's not that report.
Okay.
I'm not going to allow anything else. I did say a question. We have provided you with a written response to all the sub-questions. Please, please take them away. If there's anything you're unhappy with, Diane, happy to take some time out, can't do it forever, but I'm happy to take some time out, meet up with you, and go through some of these issues. Because this meeting's got to conclude by half past four, I've got loads of business on the agenda that is important for this city as well. So I'm not going to allow you to come back and ask a question, but you can make a comment.
I'm minuted. My questions are in the minutes, and your responses to my questions are in there, too.
Definitely, Diane. Once again, thanks for coming in. And if there's anything that's missing, and you want some clarity, get in touch, and we'll provide a response. Thank you ever so much. We've also got Bridget Kelly. Thank you ever so much for being so patient, Bridget. And thanks for coming in.
So councillors, I'm Bridget Kelly. I'm a community activist in East Ecclesfield. There is considerable concern amongst residents in Ecclesfield and Chapel Town about traffic flow. Both areas have close proximity to the M one and the M sixty one, respectively. Traffic comes off fast-moving roads designed for fast-moving traffic, travelling at speed into built-up urban areas, where young moms with pushchairs, people with mobility issues, older people have to navigate roads unfit for the speed or volume of traffic. Safety issues resulting from the speed of traffic are made worse by a lack of safe crossings. Particularly areas of concern are local schools. Poor signage, and in some instances, no signage as speed limits, compound this road safety hazard. This is a resource issue. I asked the chairs of the committee to work with the Ecclesfield and Chapel Town Traffic Action Group, ECTAG, to find ways of funding solutions. So the problems are a lack of signage for speed limits, a lack of crossings, and a lack of safe crossings, non-enforced speed limits, non-enforced parking restrictions, examples parking on junctions or yellow lines, a need for resident parking schemes, and a need for dropped curves. Working with Ecclesfield and Chapel Town Traffic Action Group would also offer a sensitive and responsive local consultation with people experiencing these hazards on a daily basis. I urge the committee to work with ECTAG to find ways to resolve these issues. And I would just want to add that there are a number of residential apartments for older people in Chapel Town and Ecclesfield, where there are just, it's impossible for them to get across the road. And that compounds their sense of isolation. So they'll get a family member to go to ASDA rather than go themselves. And that actually, I think, compounds mental health issues. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for coming in, Bridget, especially on the last point. I remember when I was cabinet member for public health, isolation is a killer as well. It hugely impacts. On some of the issues you raise, we also need to speak to South Yorkshire Police to see what enforcement they can do around the speed limit. We get requests very similar to yours from all over the city. And you'll have heard what I said earlier, due to the devastating cuts by this Tory government, thirteen years, we have a lot less cash, we have a lot less people, but we have delegated authority to local area committees. This is something that we could jointly look at. So the local area committee, working with your local councillors, and ourselves, I'd like to come down, as I said, to somebody earlier, be good to get a feel of what's happening around there. And as you said, work with the Ecclesfield and Chapel Town Traffic Action Group to find a solution. So we will be in touch to try and, somebody else might be sitting here after the elections, but the commitment, and we can mitigate, is that we'd like to come out and visit and work with you to address some of the concerns you raise. Not being able to get your basic necessities on a day-to-day basis is just not good enough. And we want people of all ages to get out, because it's good to get out. We don't want them stuck indoors. So hopefully, I can give you that commitment on behalf of the committee, that working with ourselves, yourselves, South Yorkshire Police, and anybody else to address the issues that you've raised with us this afternoon. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Go on.
Thank you, Chair. It's just a point of accuracy. You mentioned that, quite rightly, that the reason we're unable to respond to this and so many other pressures on the council is because of the cuts from central government. You described them as Tory cuts. And I think we have to be politically balanced and accurate. And I think Nick Clegg played a pretty crucial role in one of those national governments. And I think it would be really inaccurate and unfair for anybody to describe Nick Clegg as a Tory.
Is Richard Tinker coming in, Castle Croft? No. Got a question then from John Wright, who isn't able to attend, but has asked Vanessa to attend. Hiya, Vanessa. Thank you ever so much for being patient.
Okay, I hope, yes, I can see this. Well, thank you very much. I'm Vanessa Senga from Crooks Ward.
If you sit down, then we could probably hear you.
Better, nearly better?
Yeah, you'd be closer to the mic then.
Hunter intuitive for me. Okay. Right. Hi. I'm Vanessa Senga from Crooks Ward, and John's asked me to come and ask this question fairly short notice, so I'll probably have to read it rather than, it's very short. I'd like to say that the question's for John Wright, who's unable to come, but I actually support John's question one hundred percent. So I'm reading his words. It's from both of us. As a resident living within Cook's Active Neighbourhood Scheme, so that's what this is about, I have personal interest in this issue. I'm directly affected by the scheme and very keen to know which measures will be made permanent, if any, and what is going to happen next. This is an aside, I think the consultation finished at the end of February. So there are three questions here. We hear that two hundred thousand pounds has been committed to the ongoing development of the Active Neighbourhood Schemes. And next question is, how is the two hundred thousand pounds to be allocated? And what proportion of it is intended to be used to making any retained interventions permanent? Is there any scope for alterations to the trial interventions if analysis of the consultation responses demonstrates an appetite for amending or redesigning rather than scrapping certain measures? Is it possible that any of this funding could be allocated to scoping potential residents' parking permits, given that this has been raised as a request by many of the residents in response to the Active Neighbourhood trial? John says, I would support such a move, parking on his road, which is Springhouse Road. His parking is terrible and has been worsened by the implementation of the scheme. I'd just like to add just one line from me, Chair. My name is Vanessa, as I say, I'm actually a resident on Pickmere Road and have been affected by this scheme beneficially and non beneficially. And I know that John's been talking to a lot of residents and doing a lot of work on this. And we would really like a response, because there's a massive amount of interest and anxiety, I have to say, about this scheme and what's going to happen. As I say, there have been so many responses, positives and negatives. So John and others will make sure that the people that have raised it with us, will make sure that your responses are published as quickly as possible. Thank you, Chair.
Once again, thank you, Vanessa, for coming in. And as, I don't know if you heard what I said to one of the questioners, myself and councillor Julie Growcott, when we came in early June, working with the offices and the committee, we arranged for these community consultation events. Like you said, there was positive and negative, and the messaging has got a bit lost. But the work we've all done, the offices, working with the councillors down there to ensure that the scheme is successful. It has been a challenge. We've never done anything like this before. And I understand the Experimental Traffic Regulation Order comments were accepted until the third of March twenty twenty three, so concluded last week, actually. But the final report will be coming back here in the summer, so around June, July. But the commitment, and I hope this is minuted, whoever comes in, it's important that we go out and hold those community consultation events, because it's important that those communities are involved in that decision-making. Regarding the two hundred thousand pounds, it sounds like an awful lot of money. But when you get involved in schemes like this, it quickly evaporates. I mean, the two hundred thousand pounds, we probably need a lot more if we were going to explore the parking permit. At this moment in time, that fund just isn't sufficient to do that. But parking permit has been raised in this chamber a number of times. An advocate is being councillor Craig Gamble-Pugh, because we've just done it in the city centre, so we're going to be looking at changing the policy. But the two hundred thousand pounds, to answer the final question, some of this will be allocated. We need to crunch what's come back from you as residents and what you'd like. We need to crunch what's come back from you as residents and what you'd like to see. And then we'll also get an opportunity to hear and see what's being said. Some of that budget is going to go on communications, but also some of it could be used to look at some permanent features. It's in the report today to be approved. We haven't said, you know, it's definitely going here or there. As you've heard me say repeatedly, due to the cuts, bit of cash here, do need to bring one or two people in who can work with us. So we are good at communicating, getting the message out there, and you're able to do the same, communicate with us. So watch this space. We will be back there in June, and you'll be hopefully involved how this cash is spent. Sorry, the other point I should make, the £200,000 isn't solely for Crooks. We have an active travel scheme in parts of Walkley as well, and then we have it at Nether Age. But once again, thank you for coming in, and hopefully you've answered your points. The final person who's been waiting is Michael Shilton, is it? Oh, James Martin is the latter. So yeah, Michael, please come along.
Hello, thank you for having me. So I'm here on behalf of some Beighton residents in the Springwell Estate. I know this issue affects a considerable amount of Beighton, which is the Eckington Way site proposed in the draft local plan. I'd like to thank Mazza for coming out, not Sunday, Sunday, but before then, to see the site for himself. And I think he realised that the residents and myself's concern over the traffic and congestion, there's been a lot of information flying around about how the local plan works and everything like that. So I've got two quite brief questions, because I know you've got other business to get on to. So first of all, how and when was the working group for the draft local plan formed and who sits on it? And secondly, can residents and myself have an update on the Eckington Way site following the working groups meeting, I believe, early last week? Thank you.
Thanks for coming in, and thank you for the invite, as I said, to the residents at Beighton, decisions taken by this committee, the TRC, and Strategy and Resources. And as I said to the residents, we've been working, the local plan member working group was formed following endorsement by the Cooperative Executive in October 2021. So 18 months or so we've been working as a collective. After the local elections in May 2022, the role and mandate of the working group was reinforced in the Strategy and Resources Committee in May 2022. The current membership of the group is councillor Julie Growcock, who's the co-chair, but also the deputy leader, myself, councillor Paul Turpin, councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubo, councillor Mike Leary from the Liberal Democrats, and councillor Andrew Senga, as a member of this committee and the Lib Dem spokesperson. So it has been cross-party for best part of two years. Regarding your second point, we did have a meeting on the 6th, and the officers are still working through the large number of comments that were made on the draft plan. Recommended responsive issues include, so any issues such as the Beighton site and anything else we pick up will be collated towards the end of mid-April, end of June, and then will be considered formally by the Strategy and Resources Policy Committee, so very similar to here. So it is cross-party, because I am disappointed that there is misleading statements out there regarding, me and councillor Growcock, that the Labour Party now run the council want to be very, very clear, there is no overall control. The committee's cross-party, and as I said, this will be minuted for people of Beighton, so they've got the factual information out there. And hopefully, also, the concerns and issues that we've picked up, not just in Beighton but across the city, will also come to that committee. So we'll get an opportunity to hear what's being said and what is it that we can do to address some of the issues and concerns. I'm sorry that the residents of Beighton have had to put up with some of the misleading statements, which are completely uncorrect, because it says that the Liberal Democrats are not involved, it's just me, Julie, and Terry, and that's not the case, as you can see, and it could be streamed. Councillor Growcock?
Yeah, I think you made a really valid point there. It is extremely disappointing that people aren't standing up to the responsibilities and are placing the blame incorrectly with other people. But just so you are aware, we were due, as the cross-party working group, to have a meeting on Monday to look at the information from the local plan, so we could start forwarding that on. Unfortunately, that's been cancelled because they're still working their way through the responses, because there is just such a lot of work to do with that, that we will be meeting up and we will be progressing that as soon as we possibly can.
Yes, councillor Senga.
Yeah. I'd just like to say two things. One is that the officers at the last meeting of that working group said the vast majority of comments across the city had been from residents of Beighton and Mosburgh concerned about the site on Eckington Way. That was clearly the most responses from anywhere across the city. And so officers have been asked to look again at that site. And can I remind all colleagues here that the current makeup of the council, there are 38 members of the Labour Group and 29 Liberal Democrats, and the leader, councillor councillor Terry Fox, is a member of the Labour Party. Thanks, Chair.
If we are going to get political, I'll make the final political point then. I mean, having seen the emails from councillor Curtis Holland, which clearly says the Liberal Democrats have had no involvement in the local plan, I don't like to get political, but accusing, A, that it's Labour council that's in charge and running the city is incorrect, it's no overall control. But the email from councillor Curtis Holland clearly says that the responsibility lies with myself, councillor Fox, and councillor Growcock, and abdicates everything else, which I think is misleading, infactual, and doesn't help the city nor the local plan. The local plan is a very important document for the city, it sets out the vision and everything else. And I think more than that, it's important that we be providing factual information to the residents that elect us to represent this. So he's abdicating his responsibility, we are not. The final question, Michael, once again, thank you ever so much for coming in. Happy to come up again if you need me to, but hopefully we'll keep you informed of what's happening.
Thanks very much, really appreciate it.
The final person is James Martin. Once again, like everybody else, James, thank you ever so much for waiting patiently.
Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for taking this question, that as a result of decisions taken in yesterday's Strategy and Resource Committee, where they resolved to no longer purchase green-sourced energy certificates, which has passed a budget allocation of approximately £40,000 annually over to this committee. And I think there's some useful reflections here. One suggestion in yesterday's meeting was along the lines from one councillor that a sustainability officer role could be a good use of this. I would just like you to reflect on this from an equalities perspective. With the far and wide reach of change required to meet the council's net zero carbon goals by 2030, it is clear that existing engagement groups within the disabled community will not have the capacity to help the council to spot and adapt, as many proposals that will come out of this work. With changes already in the pipeline across transport and the built environment, the Access Liaison Group agenda is already full, and there are challenges in both officer resourcing and frankly, independent resourcing through Disability Sheffield to facilitate and direct independently the consultation and outreach needed to make this as inclusive a set of changes as possible. It's worth noting that much of my time on transport actually is voluntary, it's beyond what I do at my role at Disability Sheffield, and I'm reaching my limit of what I can help this city to work through in an equitable manner. I'm passionate, I care about this city, but we really need to look very carefully about how we ensure that we think very carefully about each change that's made in how things work. For those that have attended events looking at what changes are needed for the net zero goal, there is so much more than transport and the built environment, and making incorrect decisions can build in even more inequality and cause us to not take people with us. So we need to be really careful. So I have started flagging the lack of resource for this additional work with senior officers and the additional capacity needed. As yet, we've not found solutions for that extra. Hence, presenting this with you today as councillor to really be wise about that extra money that will come your way, looking obviously at the green agenda. You'll notice, I mentioned outreach as well as engagement, there is a real need for us to be eyeing up how to take people with us. It's vital that disabled people, who could easily be cut off in various ways, we've heard a few examples from some of the questions today, that we make sure that we take everyone with us, both in the understanding of the why of change, and really be stakeholders in how to make things as inclusive and equitable as possible. I recall from the introduction event on the heading towards net zero, there was at least one business person in the city who felt quite happy at saying, well, you know, maybe not all disabled people who do need cars as a mobility aid will be able to be facilitated. And that is the degree at which sometimes there is a lack of understanding. So yes, I encourage the committee to carefully consider the needs that I've outlined in terms of engagement and outreach and the mixture of potentially officer and definitely voluntary community sector support that's needed. And that often what comes out of the disabled community benefits everyone across the city. It usually draws out most of the issues that are faced by older people, et cetera. Thank you for your time, and I have included a written, you know, taste or example that councillors can be aware of. Thank you.
Thanks ever so much, James, for coming in today. It was councillor Growcock, she sits on Strategy and Resources, made us aware of it as early as she could. And you are the fabric of this city. I mean, it is great as a volunteer, honestly. I'd like to extend our thanks to you and the organisation. But yeah, we need to find that resource, because it is, I mean, yes, 13 years' worth of cuts, but I'm hoping our officer wills going to find a solution, because if I asked a question to this committee, can we find some resources, they'd all put their hands up and say, yes, we need to find some results. But to ensure that we take the right decisions, it's important that all voices are heard. And you have been a stalwart over the years, the Access Liaison Group is a key stakeholder in this city, especially when it comes to schemes, planning and so forth, and when we're designing schemes here regarding how people get about on the transport scheme. So, you know, your contribution is key, because it's, as you've said, we need to be fair and equitable, because this city is for everybody. So yes, we will look at the resource issue that we face. I don't know if we all wanted to come and add something.
Can I just come in quickly, Chair, if that's all right? Thanks, James. I was also at Strategy and Resources when you asked the question yesterday. So we had the question relatively late, so we're still working through it. But what I can say is that I fully support what Chair said about your contribution. It's vitally important that we hear the voices of our disabled community in this city, particularly around planning, particularly around transport and other aspects of our life. That's why I've asked that the issue of resourcing for Access Liaison Group is brought to SLB, because I think currently... Oh, sorry, sorry, Senior Leadership Board. So that's the most senior officers within this organisation. I've asked for that to be raised as a matter of urgency, because there are some concerns around how we move forward with Access Liaison Group, as we've discussed, James, on a couple of occasions. So that will be raised next week. I think just going to the point around what was discussed yesterday around Regos and the money, I think you make a really, really good point, that the work that we need to do around climate mitigation needs to hear from disabled people. You know, this is something which needs to be reflected across this city. It's important that any measures that we place in place to address climate mitigation concerns involve our disabled community. So again, we need to make sure that we're making adequate corporate resource, in my view, to properly fund this, rather than just look for disparate pots around the council. So that's something I've asked to be raised. Just in terms of the money that's going to be reallocated from Regos, I think the decision yesterday at Strategy and Resources was that this committee would basically debate what would happen with the £40,000. My suggestion to Tom Smith, who's head of Direct Services, who's involved with Regos, is that this sort of helps us to formulate an engagement and communication strategy around our climate action. So I'm certainly positive that we can do something in this regard. But again, that's a relatively limited pot of money, and we need long-term consistency to be able to support the work of Access Liaison Group. So again, I would make the case for some corporate funding for that.
And I would definitely, I mean, we're running out of time to debate, James, but the commitment, and I hope my colleagues don't mind me saying this, all of us value the work you do, and it's heartening to hear that we're going to find some resource. I mean, we do hold back, is it 20% of the fee on planning? We do hold back some of that. There are creative ways of trying to find that resource. So the assurance I'd like for you to walk away, James, is that we will ensure that resources are made, because the contribution you've made over the years, it's now we also step up to ensure that all voices are heard. So once again, thanks ever so much. And I remember my colleague Anne Murphy, who passed away, God bless us all, she used to take us up and she was a champion as well. So again, the offer is, I put some of the questioners and petitioners, if you want any member of this committee to come down and meet with your members, happy to do that as well. And it's great to hear the commitment from Strategy and Resources fed down to here. And as Will has said, it's going to the highest officer board, so that shows you the importance that we take of ensuring that the disability community feels that they are part of the new Sheffield as well. So thank you for coming in. That concludes business. I'm hoping, we conclude at half past four. Is that half past four?
So the meeting would be limited to two and a half hours, which is half past four, unless it's extended by up to two periods of 30 minutes by resolution of the committee?
I mean, what I'm going to suggest is, we've all had briefings, so for anybody who's listening in and streaming in, we do have pre-meetings. We have had an opportunity to see the report. So unless there's a burning desire for colleagues who want to extend time, I'm happy to look at that, or we can see how far we quickly get. People can ask a question or a comment, and I do believe we can conclude by half past four.
I think we do need to try and extend by at least half an hour. I'm hoping that, like myself, colleagues have all read the papers, and the officers can just give us a quick two-minute overview of them, and if we've got any particular questions, put them in and then make decisions.
Councillor Senga?
Yeah, I'd like to second the proposal from councillor Growcock to extend by half an hour. I will try and keep my questions and comments as brief as possible.
Brilliant, thank you. Can we all? See you again, Diane. Right, so over onto the agenda. So the first, so we've got, first item is work programme. Report from the director.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, we're just recommending it for approval and the new and amended items are on page 35 of the report. If anyone's got any questions, they can be directed to the officers.
Thank you. Amanda, do you want to just introduce yourself?
Apologies, Amanda Clayton, Democratic Services Officer.
Brilliant. Good to have you on board. Any questions on item seven?
Very, very, very briefly, Chair. I mean, this committee's worked incredibly hard this year. Clearly, whichever colleagues are fortunate to serve on this committee next year are going to have to work twice as hard to hit their work plan. I'll leave it at that, but we've had far too much to do. We've all worked very hard. The officers have done their absolute best to try to service us, but we've had too much on our work plan. And I just hope that the nine colleagues chosen for next year are able to manage to work twice as hard as we have. Thank you, Chair.
Cheers. Councillor Grow?
Yeah, and I think it's just about saying thank you to officers for the support and for the amount of work that they've done. And a big thank you to Matt Reynolds, who, despite my best efforts, is abandoning us to go to Rotherham. I have no idea why. As somebody who were there for 25 years, I have no idea why, Matt, but you'd be very welcome back whenever you'd like to return. But thank you for all you've done.
Councillor Sankar? Councillor Cooper?
I just want to second that. I think we've all appreciated Matt's hard work. He's been very helpful. He's he's got us up to speed, he's explained things very well. He's an invaluable member of the team and we will miss him a lot.
Craig, lock the door. That's what, no, on a serious note, because we've got Sarah here as well. And Amanda's going to be replacing Sarah. I mean, Matt, all offices that I've worked with are amazing people, you know, they can choose to go in the public sector, but, sorry, in the private sector, but choose to come in in the public sector and, you know, the difficulties we went through, COVID, cost of living. You know, it's amazing what the the officer corps within the council do with with the members. So personally, I'd also like to extend my gratitude. I won't let you cross the border if I could, but, you know, it's, you know, part of the region, it's a good plus for Rotherham. Difficulty for us to find somebody to come in. I know there's a shortage of people out there, but again, we are really grateful for your contribution. You work mad hours like everybody else. And I'm going to say this now, Will did say to Tom, you better put his phone, laptop away Friday evening because the workload is just horrendous, isn't it? It's, you know, the the welfare of our staff is important. I know we've got cuts. Probably shouldn't just single out Tom, but there'll be other departments. When I was in Business Sheffield, it's the same thing. They work incredibly long hours and it's amazing what they do for the city of Sheffield. And Rotherham's going to benefit, but we've still got some amazing people. Don't you dare try and porch them. Because we've got a lot more to do here in Sheffield. So wish you the best of luck and hopefully see you again. Moving on to the next item, delivery plan to mitigate overspend and improve income generation.
Thanks, Chair. This is just a quick report which is summarising some of the decisions that members made in the autumn of last year around budget implementation plans. So for those decisions where we need a formal committee response or a formal committee decision, they are set down in the paper. I did run members through this a week or so ago, so hopefully no surprises. These are just slight increases to areas where we need to increase fees and charges that we make across the council in order to meet with our budget saving commitments.
Cheers. Hopefully, everybody's had the chance to read the report. It's a pity it's not bringing in millions. It's a few thousand pounds, but, you know, every penny does count. So thanks ever so much. Is everybody in agreement with the recommendations? Brilliant. Thank you ever so much. Moving swiftly on, local and neighbourhood transport programme 2324.
That's me, Kate Jockle, Transport Policy and Strategy Manager. Just by way of a quick intro, this report is about what we, what's now called the Local and Neighbourhood Transport Programme for next year 2324, seeking approval for the shape of the programme, the development of the schemes within it and being subject to the usual processes. Part of the wider Transport Capital Programme, the big schemes that you all know about. This particular element is part of, it's got a five-year funding source called the City Region Sustainable Transport Settlement, which is administered by South Yorkshire Mayor or Combined Authority, started back in April last year, so it runs through to March 2027. This element of it is similar in scale and remit to what we previously known as the Local Transport Plan. The funding equates to about three and a half million per annum. Doesn't have to be all spent in a particular year, it can be carried forward into into future years. But obviously, it includes many of the smaller and the more popular types of schemes that we do. And we'd like to crack on with as many as we possibly can in 2324. So for example, it includes a local road safety schemes which targeted at reducing road traffic collisions. The 20 mile an hour zones, rolling out the approved 20 mile an hour speed limit strategy across the city. 11 areas expected to be completed in 2324 and another five or so commenced. Pedestrian enhancements, there's a lot more in this block in terms of funding than than we've had in previous years. And we've we've expanded that part of the programme in order to include some work with the with the LAX. So the intention is to develop an additional seven pedestrian crossings, one per LAC. And there's also an allocation of about 50,000 per LAC in the year for other types of pedestrian improvements. The recommendation suggested in the in the relevant paragraph is that in 2324, we look at doing some, or the LAX look at proposing areas for drop crossings and taptiles because those can be delivered quickly. And then maybe if there are other types of pedestrian improvements, those could be considered for future years. Network management, that covers a whole range of interventions. It includes the 200,000 that was mentioned earlier in relation to the active neighbourhoods and deciding which elements of those to take forward. It also includes taking forward the measures that will have powers to do under the Traffic Management Act when those are granted. Things around waiting restrictions through TRO processes in response to requests that we receive, disabled parking in district centres and and more besides. As I said, the individual schemes will be progressed through the usual capital gateway process. This committee will be updated if there are any significant changes to the shape of the programme as we go through the year. There are also a number of things flagged up in the report that we would want to come back to this committee with to get your view, such as the criteria for rolling out signs of secure cycle parking across across the city. And also, we'd come back to the committee, I think probably the intention would be to come back and do a six-monthly update anyway, which is something that I think we did last year as well.
Brilliant. Any questions or comments? Councillor Cooper?
Yeah, sorry, I have one question. It's about the public rights of way. It says that you have a 10-year programme to improve surfacing, which will help to reduce maintenance costs and allow maintenance liability to move to Amy. Does that mean tarmac-ing over public rights of way or what's that mean?
Chair, shall I, shall I come into that? Effectively, these, the the main areas that we target through this allocation are are kind of urban sections of public rights of way that aren't currently in the Streets Ahead Programme or kind of, you know, the contract. So there are sections of generals across the city, for example, that, you know, are not being maintained at a certain standard that are, you know, in winter, winter months aren't particularly nice to walk down. And we do focus a lot of the activity on on some of those, as well as some other other locations across the city. No.
Councillor Shaw?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the reports. On page, well, on page 96 of the Big Park, it talks about the 20 mile an hour zones being reviewed in 24, 25 onwards. What will be the the scope of that review? Because it doesn't really say what's going to be reviewed or or how. And also, it lists five additional 20 mile an hour zones being brought forward into the, into the programme for 2324. Is there a master list of all the areas that are being considered? Have these been, not drawn out of the hat, but can we have a copy of the the full list of 20 mile an hour zones? So if you see, if someone asks us, when's my area coming, you might give them an indication. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, I'm sure that's fine. So that was question two. What was the first, what was the first part of the question?
About the the scope of the review.
Oh, the review. So the, so, so I think committee, what would have been committed, but back in the day, a decision was taken to roll out 20 mile an hours in terms of signs and lines across the whole of the city, area by area. That obviously in in certain areas has been, that means that certain roads are excluded and perhaps more severe, if you like, traffic management type measures might be needed to tackle those sorts of roads. That would obviously slow down the programme of rolling out citywide, potentially be more expensive. So that would be the, that would be the issue to be reviewed.
Sorry, just to
If committee wanted to review it.
So so could it, for instance, decide that instead of doing it area by area, it would do like the whole city at once? Would that be within the scope of the review? Or is it much more kind of limited in terms of like implementation of area by area?
Do you want me to come into that? So I I think in terms of the the kind of main tenet of the the kind of issue is that we know that kind of reducing down speed in the city is is going to be important in terms of the overall road safety. And in our road safety statistics in the city are, as we previously discussed with committee, something that we really do need to take a focus on. What we know is that where we take forward a signed-only strategy, it is those those streets that are at certain speeds, average speeds at the moment, that don't get included in the the lower speed limits because signed-only schemes only make a slight reduction in in actual speeds. So in terms of the rollout, we we would still need to roll out signs across the city. So the way in which we currently prioritise in areas is to manage that budget position. Over the last year, we've done a significant amount more of 20 mile per hour zones because we've had the road safety funding that the council has invested into that programme. Now, in terms of taking forward a wider, whole kind of remaining city kind of approach, then clearly there'd be still that draw on funding. Happy if committee wants us to, to to kind of consider that impact and bring that out through the review. But the main tenet was around those streets that are currently excluded because speeds are too high in some of our residential communities. And we need to review whether actually there is a need to take action on some of those roads that are currently excluded.
And hopefully the the new committee post the election can take forward that piece of it. But it's, thank you for the report. Seems like there's something here for everybody across the city, pelican crossings, 20 mile per hour zones, improvements for pedestrians. So welcome this report. It's great news for the city. I wish we could double or triple year budget. Unfortunately, the government didn't give us that ability yesterday. But thank you for everybody involved. Next one, is that you, Tom? Sorry, do we need to take a vote? Sorry, jumping ahead. Members in favour of the recommendations? Brilliant. Thank you ever so much. Item 10 is future for the provision of electric vehicle charging points.
Hi, yeah, that's me, Jenny Wood, I'm a senior transport planner working for for Tom. Just got a couple of slides, a bit of background on this item. So this is a slide that is illustrating where some of our council-owned electric vehicle rapid charge points are at the moment. We've got 27 rapid charge points, which were installed with funding from government and national highways. 20 of them became operational in 2122 with another seven due to come into operation shortly because of the need to resolve some contractual issues related to the original supplier going into administration. 10 of them are taxi-only as a condition of that funding. We also have an additional two rapid charge points and 46 fast charge points that will be coming into operation soon. And the Mayor or Combined Authority are also installing 31 fast charge points this year at park and ride sites in Sheffield. So publicly owned, that will give us an overall total of 77 fast and 29 rapid charge points once they all come into operation. You can, if you, could we just have the next slide, please? Sorry, thanks. So there's obviously privately owned charge points as well across the city, which is illustrated on on this map here. You can search for electric charge points, including privately installed on websites such as ZapMap and Plugshare. In January 23, there are 157 public charge points in Sheffield. And that's below the UK, well below the UK average. And a catalysing increase is needed in the coming years to support the transition to electric vehicles, which is where this report is coming from. It's following on from a previous report to committee in September on an infrastructure update and short-term action plan where we undertook to develop a procurement proposal for a commercial partner to work with the council to deliver EV charging infrastructure in the city. Under this proposal, we'd appoint an external provider to support the council in developing sustainable public EV network that was, that was, could be commercially sustainable. Because of funding that we've accessed to date from government, although it's available at the present time, isn't expected to continue forever. We'd expect the providers to also invest in this infrastructure, making the funding go further, to own and be responsible for the charge points, including the operation and maintenance, again, because the public funding won't be available forever and we need this network to be sustainable into the future. Any spend of public funds via the contract would be subject to separate approvals, but we would envisage that this contract, when developed, would be the route to deliver infrastructure, utilising funding that that came into the council. Thank you.
Good to see you, Jenny. Great piece of work. I know I could sense the disappointment. You'd like to do more, but hands are tied, aren't they? Again, the government didn't give us enough cash. But it's good to see we're working, finding other solutions, like bringing in a contractor. Any questions? Councillor Sankar?
Well, I mean, it's a, it's a comment really, I mean, welcome the work that's going on. It's really, really great. But when you see that map, the the gaps and the number of people you talk to who are saying, thinking, I want to get an electric vehicle. We know there's been supply chain problems, but then they're just range wary. And we just need to have a very good EV network so that, you know, more people, so it's not just the early adopters, so we can move away from this 5%. Because we've got to get to the stage where, you know, half the city are driving EVs. And we're not at that point. And this report takes us the next step, but there's a lot more steps before we get to that point. So welcome the progress and welcome the huge amount of work officers are doing, but there's more to do. So thanks, thanks as far as it goes.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else speak comments? I mean, I just echo what's been said, as I said earlier, amazing piece of work. Government needs to put their hand in. Good to see the Mayor or Combined Authority, they're a bit like us, don't have much cash, but have made a contribution. So hopefully, we can see you soon and you'll be telling us we've got more. Thank you ever so much, Jenny. Can we vote on that, folks, before I forget? Yep, brilliant. Thank you ever so much. The next one is five ways walk improvements.
That's me, Chair. Thank you. So Matthew Reynolds, Service Manager for Transport Planning and Infrastructure. I'll try and be quite brief with this one. It is relatively straightforward. We've been successful in in getting SUSTrans funding for the National Cycle Network. This equates to about £100,000. So accepting that grant is a delegated office decision, which will go through the normal
So accepting that grant is a delegated office decision, which will go through the normal channels, but what we're trying to, what we're doing with this report is bringing it to this committee to outline a £10,000 allocation from the LTP through the cycling budget as almost a policy positioning in cases of project overspend as we would be expecting it given the current climate of the infrastructure projects. The specific piece of work is for some improvements in the five ways walk between East Coast Road and Stevenson Road. It's a very popular route for recreational cycling. It does, the five ways walk doesn't necessarily align to our funding priorities through the FT because that is focused on commuter cycling, which means that Sustrans funding is really important, so allocating it towards this particular route is one of our priorities. And just to note, it will be resurfacing the current path, which is not a very good standard, it'll be widening in places to allow safe passage, there'll be a general tidy-up and there'll be a nice new bench placed there as well for people to stop and have a look at the area. So that's it Chair really, and I'll take questions.
Excuse anyone? No, I mean, sorry, Richard?
Thank you Chair, it, I was just a, just a comment, because this is, as it says in the report, a flagship, well, flagship leisure route primarily. There is another section that still requires resurfacing, so, and another section that was, you know, badly washed out in the floods. So just like I say, I hope those are, you know, also repaired and sorted in the future because it is a flagship route for the city.
I agree all heartedly with what you say, Richard, I mean, I'd like to also thank Paul Sullivan, it's not here, author of the report, did send us some information. I mean, I remember before I was even a councillor, this scheme going up Tinsley, Darnley, you see it down Attcliff, is absolutely awesome, but whenever we've been able to get a few quid, we get a report, we try and do as much as we can. That's the challenge, if we had a limitless amount of cash, the report would have been a lot more extensive, I would have hoped, but we are where we are, welcome this. Did you want to come back?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I think the important point is, is that we recognise that, we know there's the bit which has fallen into the river as the result of the slipping from the floods. And actually, part of this conversation has opened a really good line of communication with Sustrans about securing that funding for the future. So the options are there, we've got some feasibility reports, as you know, have been completed, that's kind of outlining what the financial requirements would be to make that back up to standard, that we're using this as a platform to start exploring those avenues of future funding.
Thank you so much. Can we vote on that? Can we, yeah, brilliant, thank you. Item 12, carton old 20 mile per hour scheme. Over to you Sir.
That's me again, please Chair. So this is one of our standard 20 mile an hour schemes, as mentioned in one of the previous reports. This one is for the Carton Hall area, the whole area which was, which went out for ad from the traffic regulation order is defined as 20 mile an hour, so this is the bit between Carton Hall Road all the way through to Barnardell Road. We had 98 responses to the consultation, of which there was three objections focused around air quality, compliance with the speed limit particularly related to Mercy School, and then one around several roads not included within the adjacent schemes. Now, this is something which we have picked up, the reason why I'm making this aware to members today is because we can't address that through this TRO, traffic regulation order, sorry. We could do, but it would probably, it would result in a delay to this scheme, so what we've, what we're prepared to do is continue with this proposal, then we'll take that back to future design and make them fill those gaps in later. Section 1.4 of the report also provides an update on previously approved 20 mile an hour zones for people to take note.
Stole my thunder there, it's really good to see the list of schemes, amazing, just follows on from the previous report. Any questions or comments? Brilliant, can we welcome this? Can we, oh, yeah, brilliant. And the final one is the part-time advisory 20 mile per hour speed limits near schools. Should be two miles per hour outside schools. They should be allowed. I'll get told off. Hiya.
I'm Susie, I am Senior Transport Planner for the council. This report is about proposed programme of part-time advisory 20 mile an hour limits outside schools. I previously came to committee in December with the report and it was considered then, at the time it wasn't passed, so the committee asked for further background information on all schools in the city and a review of the scoring mechanism. So as requested, the appendix attached report has now been updated and contains a list of every school in Sheffield and it shows the collision statistics and whether a school is in a school street or already in a 20 mile an hour area or is proposed to be in one shortly. It also shows any road safety activity that's already carried out in the schools. The scoring mechanism for the programme's priority list has been revised and we've now got a much higher score for any child collision, injury collisions outside the school. So basically those schools come top of the priority list if they're not already in a school street or 20 mile an hour area. And yet this report is seeking approval to introduce advisory part-time 20 mile an hour limits outside schools in the priority order set out in the report. Thank you.
Susie, great piece of work, I mean, I was off field then, so any, I mean, hopefully members have had a sigh, so it's been sent back members. So if I take Camps Coob or Counselor Hayes and then Counselor Shaw.
Yeah, I'm very happy with this report, so this isn't really a comment on this report, Chair, this is, didn't we have a petitioner from, talking about Ethicalsfield School? This is top of the list now, isn't it? So I think it's just pointing out that we're going to be, we should have maybe said that when we replied to it, we have got it on our list and we're dealing with it, but.
Well spotted.
Yes, thank you. It was just to appreciate, to say thank you for this piece of work. It's much more complicated, but it gives us a much better picture. So thank you very much for that and it's, yeah, let's hope we come from the lottery and we can, we can run down the list as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Counselor Shaw.
Thank you Chair and thank you Susie and all the officers who've worked on this. Well, having read the report, I think they've taken on basically all of our comments that we made and, yeah, I'm very happy with it. Just one question, one question about the formulas, so you give them all weighting to collisions and things, so just to be clear, it's 20 points per instance of a collision, not 20 points per casualty, because I know in one there was where three children, well, three children had been injured in the single collision and another case, there were two children injured in two separate collisions and I'd got more points than the one where three had been injured at once. Yeah, just check that, that's the, is meant to be like that or not?
The weighting date.
Yeah, 20 points per collision, yeah.
So are you happy with the response, Richard? Counselor Shaw? Yeah, brilliant. Can I just also say, I mean, it highlights, as we've been saying for, well, I've been saying, a number of us from last year when we were told about fatalities amongst, not just fatalities accidents, among the 15-year-old, I mean, if I had taken, you know, the school streets programme is the one for me where we basically close off the roads to ensure that our kids can get to school safely. I was in Burleigh Ward not so long ago, speaking to the primary age children then, it was heartbreaking when they're saying, you know, we're scared, we used to cycle up, a friend's got hit by a car, you know, that has a huge impact, not just on the individual, but the group of friends, the mental health. And it was good to see the head teacher out there, I've had colleagues from Burngrieve, I think it was, I keep mentioning, keeps himself busy, Counselor Pugh, I think it was, St Catherine's up at Burngrieve, that had raised it. So I hope we can support as many schools as we can, I know there's a financial challenge, £13,478, again, you know, that's an additional burden on a school, I mean, we don't have the cash because we've just had our budgets cut, but need to find a way and it is down to those vehicle drivers behaving the highway code. But I welcome this report, so thank you ever so much, Susie and your colleagues for bringing this here. If we can vote on the recommendations? Brilliant. And that concludes business, so thank you everybody. As I said, Sarah's also, I know we've thanked Matt, but Sarah, I'd like to also personally thank you and the offer of the committee, the support that you provide has enabled and ensured that I go through business, so thanks ever so much. Matt, did you want to come back?
Can I, and I know Rob's thinking, come on, let's wrap this meeting up, but I just want to say that, you know, thanks for those kind words and it's been an absolute pleasure to work for this city. You know, I am from Sheffield and I've always put every single ounce of thought into everything I've done. It's been great working with the team, with the officers and it's been a very difficult decision and I mean that for, you know, from everything, everything within me, so hopefully that, you know, there's a great, there's a great load of work, you know, the committee system, I personally think is working really well and I, and I really wish you all the very best in the future, so thank you very much.